This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'd like to welcome you to the call to order the Wednesday, February 10th, 2021 meeting of the Tonino Planning Commission. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. Let's move right into this agenda. Let's take a look at it and see if we get a motion to approve as is.
This is Erin, and I will move to approve the agenda for the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, February 10th as presented.
Okay, thank you.
This is Alex. I'll second that.
Okay, great. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, let's take a look at the minutes from the last meeting. That would be the January 13th, 2021 meeting. Did we actually end up approving the December 9th minutes at the end of the last meeting? I can't remember. There was a problem pulling them up, as I recall, but.
I actually do not recall if you guys did that or not.
Yeah. Will, my recollection was that you did not approve them pending a follow-up corrected version. Okay, well, do we have that, Jen, or shall we postpone that to the March meeting?
I don't see them on here. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Can you make a note so we can do that at the next meeting? And then obviously, we'll have to take that off of the minutes from the January meeting.
Yes.
Okay, commissioners, what do you think? Is someone driving or doing the laundry? I'm getting a lot of background noise.
It might be my furnace. Hold on.
Sure. Do you guys want to make a motion on these minutes? Are we still looking through them?
Okay, I'm back. Hopefully, that's better. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as shown.
It is better. Thank you. With the, can you add also take out the December 9th, 2020, item two there at the beginning? We did not review those minutes last meeting.
I was not at the last meeting, but I'd be happy to second the motion.
Oh, right. Okay, yeah, I forgot. Erin, you were at the last meeting, weren't you?
Yes, I'll second the motion.
I think only you and I were there, so. Yeah, so all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Okay, Lori Finkst is not here. Is that correct? Doesn't look like it. Yeah, okay. Well, let's move her down to item five and then move into the, is there a mayor's report for this meeting, Jen? I'm not sure if we're ready to start doing those again yet.
I do not have anything on that.
Okay, well, let's move on to item four then. The Thurston Economic Development Council is going to present the first draft of the Tonino Economic Development Public Input Survey.
So, well, I'm going to try to share my screen with you.
Okay. I think you may need to be made the presenter if you're not already.
Can I just ask permission?
One second. Let me get you on there.
Thank you.
While he's doing that, I want to introduce myself. I don't know if everybody knows me by sight. Just so everybody on the Planning Commission knows, I'm Michael Cade, Executive Director of the Thurston Economic Development Council.
Welcome, Michael.
Nice. Everybody knows Aslan and George, I'm assuming.
Not necessarily. I've been with the Thurston EDC as well. I don't think I've met all of the Planning Commission yet.
And I'm George Sharp. I'm the Rural Program Manager for the Thurston Economic Development Council and our steady initiative South Thurston Economic Development Commission. While we wait for the screenshot, I'll just read you the beginning statement of the survey. The city of Tonino is developing the economic development chapter for the Tonino Comprehensive Plan. Economic development plays a crucial and vital role in creating a roadmap for a successful and vibrant community. The state of Washington, through its Growth Management Act, requires that cities and jurisdictions develop, implement, and update elements and plan chapters such as housing and transportation. But the practice and planning of economic development spans many, if not all, of community planning documents. It creates a roadmap for success of how a community is able to afford many of the things it deems necessary in the creation of a successful community. The following survey is being implemented to gather information from the citizens and business owners in Tonino. It is our hope to understand what citizens and businesses want and don't want for the future of Tonino, and what they value and find important in creating a quality viable community. Are you able to get me to share the screen, Jen, or?
Yes, I am trying. For some reason, I'm having difficulties tonight. One second.
Or did you receive the document earlier today from Aslan that you could pull up in your email?
I do have that in here. One second.
That might be easier. Yeah, there it was. So what we want to do is really to find out what your citizens and your businesses value in your community, what they do. We've asked them kind of the SWOT analysis as well, same thing that we've asked you to give us feedback on. So we're going to provide a scroll through this pretty fast and then the questions that we're asking to come through. Then after we have it with you and you give us feedback, then we'll actually present it to the city council for them to review and provide if they have any questions as they want. Our first question is, how long have you lived in Tonino? The second question is, what do you think Tonino's economic development strengths are? And then we have a list of things that they can check. So it's a multiple choice question they can choose. And I won't go through all of those, but it starts with affordable place to live and then the things that we've identified that we believe are the strengths of Tonino. The next question then is, what do you think are Tonino's economic development challenges? And we've listed some there that we think that are probably identified as challenges that Tonino have. And then always have a comment box where people can add more information in if they have other things that they believe. The next question is, how should Tonino's challenges be addressed? And we have three or four suggestions there, again, looking for more. Then what do you think are opportunities for Tonino to prosper? Again, giving a list of items that we've identified. The next question is, as growth and changes occur in Thurston County and impact Tonino, how do you feel about growth and change in Tonino? This could be growth in size, population growth, and residential and commercial activity, growth in government, traffic, and any way you want to define growth. For example, you could choose very positive, then you might feel that Tonino could grow aggressively by adding commercial developments and housing. If you choose very negative, you might feel that you want to see no growth happen at all. And then they have categories. General feeling about growth, commercial growth, example, more land zone, commercial, more commercial businesses, residential growth, more housing built or more population, industrial growth, example, more industrial zone property. The next question is, how do you feel about having festivals and events in Tonino to increase tourism? And they have an option, very positive, somewhat positive, neutral, somewhat negative, very negative. The next question is, what would you like to preserve in the city of Tonino? This could be the general feel of our rural small town, or more specific, such as our historic buildings, natural areas, certain community events. Next question is, what would you like to see change in the city of Tonino? Next question is, what kind of assets are missing now that you would like to have here? That could be anything from types of businesses, services, buildings, recreation, et cetera. Next question, where do you go to shop for your services? The next question is, what kind of businesses or industries would you like to see in Tonino that aren't here? Or what businesses would you like to see more of? The next one, are there any types of businesses or industries that you would like to keep out of Tonino? Next one is, for businesses then, are you a business owner in Tonino? If so, what type of business? What makes Tonino a good place to do business? What makes Tonino a difficult place for businesses? Is there anything that you need to run your business that is missing in Tonino or that you have to go outside of the city for? Are there barriers and obstacles to expanding your business? Please be as detailed as possible. What could the city of Tonino, the Tonino Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Thurston Economic Development Council do to help your business? And then the last one, is there any other comments that you'd like to add on? So that's the proposed survey that we have for you.
And we know it's a lot, so it's probably something you do want to take some time and look through. And then just again, I don't know, George, did you set the kind of, you know, this is part of the idea of the comp plan revision and an economic development chapter that we're developing for that, and this would be specifically the public outreach piece. We talked a little bit at your meeting last month about ways to do that. And so, George, you want to talk just a little bit about that, like how we think would be good ways to reach out to the residents?
So this is actually a Survey Monkey survey, and so there'll be a link that we can post both on the city's website. We can stick it in emails. We can put it in the city's water packet to say, please go to this link. We can also post it to the Chamber's Facebook page and the Tonino Talk Facebook group. And if you have other ideas of how to do outreach, we can post it at the post office as well that the survey's taking place. And it is a PDF, so if we need to print some off for people who don't have access to the internet, we can do that as well.
What platform is it running on, George? Is it Survey Monkey, Survey Gizmo?
Survey Monkey.
Can you, Jen, can you roll back up to like question like seven or eight? Like when we've got all those, maybe a little bit more, maybe three? Yeah, I think three was the one where, so this one, yeah, for three, are you, can the respondents choose any or all of those? Are you going to ask them to rank them or what's your thought on that?
Currently, they're not ranked. They can choose any or all of them. We do have the capability of having them ranked if you want, but sometimes doesn't get the full. People don't go all the way through that process in the survey when you do that.
So overall, in general, we would be looking for input. Are these the right questions? Are we missing anything? Are there too many questions? Would we lose some questions? And then if you really want to get into the details, you know, the multiple choice answers, are we missing things there? Are there too many of those? I mean, so I know that's, it's asking a lot of review, but we would love to get input. You know, we also plan to bring this to the city council. Just trying to see if we're on the right path here.
I mean, my initial impressions are that this is a pretty thorough survey. I like the way that some of the sort of concepts are circled back to and sort of phrased a little bit differently in different parts of the survey in terms of what you want to see and how favorable you are for different types of growth. You know, I'll definitely take a closer look and give some feedback, but I think it's pretty good. I don't think it's too long either. You know, we want to get some, if somebody's going to take the time to fill it out, I think they'll make it through this.
Thank you, Will.
One of the things I think, Will, you might want to think about too is, for example, question number three, what do you think are Tonino's economic development challenges? You know, this is our idea of what those might be. The Planning Commission, you have a, you know, real, you know, day-to-day operational concept of what those challenges are. So don't be afraid to let us know if you need us to add something else. You know, I don't know what that is, but.
Sure. I mean, you guys clearly have some insiders like gripes against what it's like to live here listed in here. And number three, you know, challenges of the sewer district, the cost of utilities, you know. Yeah, I'll try to add some more to this, but. What do the rest of the commissioners think about this?
I like you. Oh, go ahead, Erin.
Oh, you go ahead, Cory.
Like you, I mean, it seems quite thorough. I guess I'm not real familiar with turning a survey into useful, actionable items, so I guess thinking about, you know, brevity of the survey. I do worry about surveys being too long. I get into surveys sometimes and I'll be interested in the topic and then just not make it through it because, you know, questions are repetitive and I'll lose interest halfway through. So, you know, I don't know that this survey necessarily meets that. It starts to get to the point where people would drop out of it, but that's a concern I would have.
George, I might have some suggestions on like some skip logic here in number three where we could sort these and if someone clicks on that, then they're given, you know, three choices to be more specific. Maybe, so maybe we can organize these into some themes and then allow for people to dive in.
I'd also be curious about the process for getting the paper form for people. Would it be something people would have to email a request for or?
In the past, what they've done is said that things are available at City Hall to pick up and fill out. But we could email it if they requested. It could be, the PDF can be emailed to them and it could complete its scan and send it back. Then we would end up physically putting it into the Survey Monkey to be able to pull the information.
Okay. It'd be ideally if people filled it out electronically, obviously.
Yeah, we can definitely post a link to it on the city website since City Hall is actually close to the public right now.
Would this be anonymous or are we wanting to collect any information?
Currently, it's set up as anonymous. That's up to you.
Anybody have any thoughts about anonymousness, anonymous and anonymity? Or you know what the word I'm trying to say. Typically, something like this on an opinion is an anonymous survey. It's not a statistical. You know, you're not trying to get a different type of statistics out of it, which you're rather trying to get trend lines. So, and sometimes people, it's anonymous, a little bit more open and forthright about what they're really trying to get at. So, there's your trade-offs either way.
Yeah, this is Alex. I think anonymous is good. I guess the main thing I'm just trying to think about is, yeah, how you get maximum exposure for participation.
Okay.
You want to spend some time on the other questions? I know we just looked at three, but you want to spend some time on the other questions and the options for those?
So are you asking me or the other commission members?
I was asking the commission members.
Thank you.
I mean, maybe question number seven, which refers to, how do you feel about having festivals and events in Tonino to increase tourism? Maybe that could be expanded upon a little bit because we do have a few that are sort of like our iconic things. I mean, we have that Four Mile Music Festival and Oregon Trail Days, which often, you know, are on the same weekend, but not always. And then we have like sort of like car shows and that kind of thing. I mean, would it be helpful to know which types of festivals people want? Or do you think that would be a little too much information for this?
Like, are you suggesting to list the kinds of festivals, Will?
I don't know. Maybe, is it helpful to know which types of festivals people want or does it make no difference, maybe?
Well, Will, one thing I was thinking about, because I totally see what you're saying. I mean, we've even got, I know a couple of years ago, they had a big football sports camp where football teams from all over, you know, high school teams came in. I guess one thing I'm thinking though is, if we're trying to keep it simple, usually if people like festivals, you know, then they're more open to, you know, all sorts of different kinds.
That's true.
You know, because we have like the Renaissance Festival in the park and, you know, car shows and so, yeah.
Yeah, maybe it's kind of irrelevant.
It does seem like it.
What I was thinking, excuse me, what I was thinking, I'd give you an idea. Again, you're not going to create a, you might create a policy within the purpose, well, we were going to ensure that Oregon Trail Days occurs every year, but you might want to think about language as you develop policies around these statements about festivals that draw in and meet the needs of the community's cultural desires. You know, Oregon Festival Trail Days, fairly specific, you couple that with some other things. If you do list those, that would give us an idea of what people really kind of queue in in the community. Are they just want to bring in tourism and dollars or do they want kind of that social interaction, cultural interaction? That, you know, that's why I go to festivals in my community. So you might want to think about what it really means to have a festival in your community. It's either cultural for the resident or brings in dollars and tourism.
Yeah, it does seem like it needs some language added in that it's not just for tourists and it's also for community pride of place and, you know, an opportunity for a celebration with, for the residents and the, you know, residents of the region, so.
So we could, I was going to say, excuse me, what we could do is if you, well, we can list existing festivals that you have and you could rank them, you know, we could ask them to rank one through five as, you know, attractive just to you type thing. That would give you an idea of kind of which ones are really kind of cut and mustered with your local folks.
Yeah. That's not bad. Yeah, I think a lot of people would. A lot of people might not want to have festivals to increase tourism, but like you guys were saying, for the other reasons. And then tourism happens as a result of those things, but not a festival to increase for the sole purpose of increasing tourism. I don't know. Probably people wouldn't be as interested in that, maybe.
No, that's a good point. Well, I guess, and that's where like the community buy-in comes in, right? You know, if you can, if you can create those festivals that the community loves, but then also bring value that attracts people from outside to add to it, that's kind of the perfect mix.
So maybe I've missed something. I wasn't here in the last meeting. I apologize. One thing I'm not entirely clear on is what is the output from the survey going to be? What does the survey result in for the city? I think.
It's to help draft the economic development portion of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so then we'll get a report or something out of the survey results that we can then integrate?
Yes.
Yeah.
Who wants to kind of expand that answer a little bit, George or Aslan, or you want me to go?
Go ahead, Michael.
Well, yeah, we anticipate giving you a report and a little bit of narrative about what we think that this report means, the input. And so as we start drafting the language that goes into your economic development element, we know that we're hitting the right points and you have the ability to help us, guide us as to kind of, hey, we didn't hear this from the community and you put a big thing on this and that's not really what we're here. That's the kind of feedback what we're looking for. So tonight, what we're hoping for is making sure we're getting the right themes and the different elements of what you want to have surveyed. And what's important for you as planning commissioners to know that we're testing your community about we will start crafting language around the responses or the trend lines. So, you know, I have a bunch of stupid examples in my head, but nobody likes gumball machines. So we're not going to put in policy languages. We're going to have gumball machines on every corner because that draws tourism. That looks cool. So that's the type of feedback we'll be providing with the report. Sorry for the bad, poor example, but my mind's at tonight, in the late night for me, so.
Great, thank you.
The other thing with this survey opportunity is that by putting the information we put in there is kind of an educational opportunity to let your community know what's already here. So you've got to create district, you've got a historic district, and then all the assets that we're listing as well as kind of a refresher, wow, we do live in a cool place.
Because you really do. You really do live in a cool place. And when you start asking people what they feel about that place, it really brings out that kind of the mental patina of how people think about your community, so. I mean, who doesn't have a pool like you guys? Nobody.
So true. Okay, well.
Shall we spend some time on the other? I'm just nervous about getting your feedback on some of the questions like number six. Want to make sure that we're asking it correctly. We can just spend some time on that. You know, this really is about growth. Is growth and change occur? It impacts Tonino. How do you feel about growth and change? Because that's really getting to the crux of the matter. Generally feeling about growth is very positive, positive, neutral, negative, because that allows you to kind of dial down how we're addressing, how aggressive we're going to be about growth in general. But then you've got to also kind of balance that notion that you're going to get growth based upon, you know, our state's allocation of population and resource for the growth management plan. So we just have to prepare for it and make sure that people feel negative about growth. What are some things that we can do? What are some things that we can do to mitigate those negative feelings? They might feel negative about growth because they, they feel the, they fear the loss of open space. Well, we can build an open space type of thing, so. I wanted to make sure I kind of looked at that question with you and make sure that you're, you're kind of understanding what might come out of this thing.
And you know, I know, I know a couple of things that obviously I'd be really interested in looking at that were touched on. Number one, obviously, right, affordable housing. There was also a great question in there that talked about housing for seniors. I think that's really good to, to hear. But then also, you know, I mean, yeah, anything that we can do to further kind of get the idea of how people feel about the, the culture of Tenino, the feel of Tenino and then kind of the vibe, right? Which kind of goes back to, you know, what draws people to live here in this, you know, quaint, small city.
Yeah, good point.
So do you have any guidance for us as far as next steps here? We do intend to share this with the city council and get their input and feedback as well. You know, we had talked to, we had shared some of the SWOT analysis we did, which is, you know, you can see some of that information here in the survey, trying to identify what are the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats that Tenino face. You know, we had talked about the possibility of coming back next month and digging deeper into that and actually doing an exercise with you all. But we're also just happy to receive feedback via email or, you know, again, what did we miss? Or, you know, what are you not seeing that you'd like to see? So just in general, what are, what next steps would you all like to see?
How are the other commissioners feeling about doing a SWOT analysis with the EDC next month? Are you guys still into that? Aaron, I think you were mentioning that you wanted to.
Yeah. Yeah, I would be.
Okay. Did you guys all get my email ICC'd Dan? And it had sort of the nuts and bolts of the SWOT analysis that the EDC did in January to kind of get our, our ideas flowing. So we have that, so we should definitely be ready to talk about that a little more next month, if not right now. When do you think you'd like to get this survey out? I mean, I, I think it's pretty good, you know? The way it is, some things could be worded differently. I really like the concept of taking the, so for question number six, taking the negatives and seeing how we can mitigate people's opinions on some of these things, because there could be a decent amount of, of negative answers to that question. But as you say, you know, we need to accommodate growth and there will be some growth. So how can we make you feel better about it? I like that approach. That sounds pretty good because we may be doing that.
George, what's your timeline? What do you think we can get this out?
Well, we'll have to have the council meeting that's going to not meet for two weeks. So we'd have to have them approve it in two weeks before we send it out. So if the planning commission could give us any feedback by the end of next week, so that we can update the survey and then provide that to council in two weeks. Once the council gives their feedback, then I would think we'll send it out a week or two after that. And probably leave it open for a month.
So that, okay, the planning commission, if you have comments, who should we send them to? You, George?
Yes, send them to me, please.
Okay, so if we have comments, send them by the 17th. Can we do that next Wednesday? Otherwise, you will not be able to comment. Do you like that, George?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, well, if there's no more discussion on the survey right now, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Thank you for your feedback.
Yeah, thanks, George. Thanks, Aslan. Thank you, Michael. So is Lori thinks here? Yeah, no? Looks like no. Okay, let's move on to the Thurston Regional Planning Council is going to give us a presentation on draft building lands reports, on the draft building lands report survey. And then we'll have a chance to ask questions. So, Michael, are you going to be giving that presentation?
Yep, that'll be me. Any luck with allowing me to share my screen? Perfect.
Is that going to work, Jen?
Yes.
I'm being slow here, sorry.
Oh, okay. I apologize. Can you introduce yourself?
Yeah, so yeah, my name is Michael Ambrogi. I'm a GIS analyst with Thurston Regional Planning Council. And I'm here with Alison Osterberg, my colleague, senior planner. And we've been working on drafting the Billable Lands Report for Thurston County. So I'll give a quick update on what Billable Lands is. So Billable Lands is a requirement under the State's Growth Management Act. It's actually, it was a 1997 amendment that was added. And it kind of sets up the cycle for the, the seven fastest growing counties in Western Washington. It sets up the cycle where they're supposed to evaluate their development trends. They're supposed to see if they're consistent with GMA's goals. If they're not, they're supposed to identify reasonable measures, which are kind of corrective measures. And then those measures are then adopted into the comprehensive plan updates. So we completed Billable Lands Report three years before the comprehensive plan updates are due with that intention that it will form that comp plan update. For Thurston County, we're working on the fourth report right now, the 2021 Billable Lands Report. TRPC has issued three previously, so 2002, 2007, and 2014. And it's kind of two key, two key questions that we ask as part of the Billable Lands Report. One is looking at achieved densities. We want to make sure that the housing densities that we're seeing within our urban areas are actually consistent with urban character. And that's generally about a four unit per acre threshold. The other question that we ask has to do with capacity. So we want to make sure that within our urban areas, we see each city in its unincorporated urban growth area, that there's enough developable land to accommodate 20 years worth of growth. And that's both residential and commercial industrial. We rely on a lot of data sources to do this analysis. So every year we get information on residential permits from all of the cities, including Tenino. We get information on subdivisions that have been recently planted, as well as projects that are in the development pipeline. For capacity, we look at TRPC's land capacity model, which kind of on a parcel by parcel basis, looks at how many dwelling units could be built and how much developable land is there, given any existing development, given the land use, given any environmental constraints and some other factors. And we also use TRPC's forecast, which uses that capacity to figure out where we think housing development and population growth is going to occur. So looking at that first question about achieved densities, we want to make sure that we're seeing densities that are consistent with urban development. So across our urban areas, North County and South County, we're, we're well above that four unit per acre threshold. And the 2000s is about just under seven units per acre, and that's almost 10 units per acre now. Tenino kind of falls in between Rainier and Yelm. So Tenino again is above that four unit per acre threshold. And in the past 10 years, we've achieved almost six units per acre. A little bit lower than Yelm, but a higher densities in Rainier. And that's really partially due to the, this sewer system in Tenino. You can't really have urban densities without urban infrastructure, which that's kind of what's holding Rainier back there or keeping the densities lower. Like I said, the next question that we look at has to do with urban capacity. Again, making sure that there's enough developable land to accommodate the growth that's projected for our cities and urban areas. And I'll start by looking at just the residential side. So here we're doing, we're doing pretty well. So TRBC, our analysis does show that there's enough capacity, there's enough developable land for the housing that we've projected over the next 20 years. So at a countywide level, we have about 85,000 dwelling units within our urban areas. We're forecasting about 40,000 across our urban areas and there's about excess capacity of about 8,900 units. And I know the percentages are roughly the same, even though the numbers are smaller. So about 780 dwelling units in Tenino right now. TRPC, our forecast is projecting 500 new acres over the next, or 500 new units over the next 20 years. And that leaves excess capacity of about 90 dwelling units. So where is that capacity? In Tenino, we see a small amount of capacity within the commercial areas, within those mixed use zones, as well as that multifamily residential. Most of the capacity is in the, the three single family zones with, again, most of it being in single family residential, which also is kind of the largest area. And West Tenino has about 120 units. That's what we've estimated as the capacity there. But that's also where there's the most uncertainty. So within Tenino, we'd say about 20% of your, your housing capacity is in West Tenino. About 40% is within, is on vacant land and about 40% is on infill and redevelopable land. I kind of, I highlighted in orange that infill redevelopment category because Tenino is kind of unique amongst Thurston County's communities. And that about half the capacity is on vacant land and about half of it is infill and redevelopment properties. And until the redevelopment, that would be a property that you can, you know, there's an existing home, but you might be able to subdivide it and then build another house on that new lot. Or it could be an existing structure that's repurposed for housing. So that's going to be a bit of a challenge moving forward is how do you actually see development in those areas, which are a little bit harder to develop?
Can I just ask?
Yeah, absolutely.
Are, are questions along the way okay? Or would you prefer questions at the end?
No, just time in, time in as we get there. It's a little easier.
I'm just wondering, when you say the West Tenino properties is where most of the availability is, is that still with the thought of the original plan that the Barnett, Alpacas of America property would be housing? And if that is likely off the market now due to gophers and other species, do we not then have available buildable lands?
Right, that's a, a great question. And TRPC, we update our forecasts roughly every three to five years. And that was one big change from the last update is that we really reduced the capacity for West Tenino because of the, the gopher habitat out there. So the 120, we met with Tenino, both with Dan and John Millard when we were doing our forecast update. And that was kind of an estimate that they helped us come up with. And that assumption is most of the development would be not on the prairies and the lowlands, but more in the, the eastern part of, if you, the eastern part of West Tenino, kind of where there's a little bit more topography.
It's called a living, that's what we call it.
Thank you. Yeah, I knew there's a name for it. Appreciate that. Any other questions? All right, move on then. So again, yeah, just looking at the, where those zones are within Tenino. So about, again, 20% in West Tenino and then about, it looks about 50 units in those commercial and mixed use areas with the remainder being in the, the single family residential parts of the city. We do the same kind of exercise, looking at commercial and industrial land. So we want to make sure that there's enough buildable lands for the commercial industrial growth that's forecasted. And again, looking at our urban areas as a whole, there, there is excess capacity, so that's good. We have more developable commercial industrial land than we need. And Tenino, there's quite a bit more. So Tenino, we are estimating about 20 acres of commercial industrial land that's built out right now. We're projecting a need for about another 22 acres, which leaves a capacity of about 67 acres. And I had this slide just to show kind of the growing importance of the South County. One thing that the, this analysis shows is that when you compare what's happened historically to what we're projecting over the next 20 years, we're seeing, we're projecting a lot more growth to just, to be occurring in the South County, including Tenino. So in 2020, about 7% of the housing was in the South County. So that's Grand Mound, Bucayucota, Rainier, Tenino, and Yelm. Those include Yelm. Over the next 20 years, we're projecting new housing to be about 20% of new housing going in those areas. For commercial industrial land, again, about 10% within the South County right now. Looking at the next 20 years, development over the next 20 years, about a quarter of that will be in the South County. So when we go back and look at our two questions, achieved densities, are we seeing urban densities in urban areas? Yes, we are. And is there enough capacity for developable land within the urban areas, enough capacity for 20 years of growth? And that's another yes. So based on that, we're, we're not recommending that reasonable measures need to be identified. So we're not recommending that there's some measures that will need to be included in the comprehensive plan updates. That being said, we do acknowledge that there's a lot of challenges to actually meeting the, the growth forecast. One is for sewer, just making sure that we can actually extend sewer to all parts of our urban areas. You can't have urban densities without sewers. So that's kind of a key assumption for our growth projection. The other one has to do with infill and redevelopment. We do forecast that infill and redevelopment will take place, but there's a bit of uncertainty over how much will occur and when it will actually be available. This rural urban housing split is something that's come up a lot, I would say, especially in Tenino. There's been endangered species listings. There's concern about water availability, both for the cities and the ability to, to get a permanent exempt well for housing in the rural county. So how will that change the balance of development in our urban areas versus our rural area? COVID has been another one. Is COVID going to, because more people are teleworking because of COVID, they're working from home? Does that mean that more people will live in the rural areas versus the urban areas? So all those things, if, if they, if there's changes there, that could change our forecast assumptions. And the last one that I mentioned here is housing affordability. So TRPC, we're projecting that there is enough capacity for housing, but is that housing actually going to be affordable to the people who live here? And the last thing that I wanted to bring up was Sustainable Thurston. Sustainable Thurston was a, a community planning project that TRPC completed in 2014. And it really set out a vision for how we wanted Thurston County to look, function, and feel in 2035. And for land use, we looked at kind of four different areas. So we looked at our centers and corridors in our North County. And the vision there was for, again, dense neighborhoods where people can live, work, and play and not depend on a vehicle. For the South Counties, the focus was really fostering economic development while maintaining the, the character of our small towns. Keep doing what's, keep preserve what's doing well, working well there. For neighborhoods, especially in the North County, we wanted to make sure that there was housing where people have access to park space, open space, as well as some retail opportunities. And for rural lands, again, the, the emphasis was preserving rural character and protecting those critical habitat and resource lands. I bring up this slide because for the North County in particular, we're not necessarily on track to meet some of the, the targets that have been set out for those areas. So the North County urban areas are having a much harder time actually getting the densities that they want to meet this vision. But for the South County communities, things are actually going pretty well. We're seeing lots of infill development, lots of small housing development that's occurring and that's consistent with the character of those communities. So the next steps as part of the Billable Lands process, Alice and I have been meeting with jurisdiction staff, as well as doing meetings like this to discuss the findings of the Billable Lands Report. And where it applies, we're trying to work with them to identify some strategies to help them meet the growth patterns that are more consistent with each community's individual vision. So we'll work with, we, we also have a stakeholder committee that we work with, an advisory committee. And so we'll work with them on any recommendations that we might include as part of that report. We'll bring it to TRPC's council for acceptance in the fall. Excuse me, we'll bring it to TRPC's council for acceptance late spring. And then this information will be used as part of the comprehensive plan updates that each jurisdiction will be completing in 2025. So that was a brief primer on buildable lands. And Dan had mentioned earlier that we also have these land capacity maps, which really show, as part of TRPC's land capacity model, it really shows on a parcel by parcel basis where we're expecting growth to occur. So I figured we could take a few questions if anyone has it, and then we can maybe explore the maps in a little bit more detail.
Nice. Thank you for your presentation, Michael.
Yeah.
Okay, commissioners, do we have any questions or audience members?
It's about billable lands or what it means for Tenino. It's about buildable lands or what it means for Tenino?
Could you go back to the slide that talks about Tenino's industrial, the amount of building industrial in for Tenino? Right up there. Nice. So does the, did, does the Ag Business Center, that's kind of not been developed yet, but is in the process of, where does that fit into our, is that fit in the twenty acres or the twenty-two?
That's probably going to be in the sixty-seven acres, that excess capacity. Because we completed the analysis in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, and I don't think there were hard plans on that at that point. So that will probably cut into that excess capacity a little bit.
Okay. That was really my only question about it?
Yeah.
Maybe we can hit the maps and then come back once there's a little more context because I think
Like a little forested area, kind of.
Yeah, right, right where the map kind of shows the road dead ending is where the where the road dead ends. So yeah, that's that whole that whole tree area in there is under under review for houses up to 10 houses. So I what I like about the map is it that it's so far, it's fairly accurate. I mean, I know you guys haven't caught up with some of the things that have happened in the last several years. That's to be expected anytime you draw a line in the sand with data. Yeah, you did a good job. You know, I think your I think your methodology is being borne out in reality. So there's there's options there. That other the other property that's north of the shopping center and on Juan's along Old Highway 99 as you head out of town to the north. Just on the on the east hand side of the school. I'd be I'd be curious how much of that is encumbered by floodplain. But that certainly looks like some land in there available for for in some infill.
That's the challenge that we really struggle with is that we were we're using the wetlands as they're mapped. And they're generally not mapped very accurately, so.
I think that property is probably not in the floodplain, actually, but. I would be surprised if it is.
How wet is it, Will?
It's not. It's not really wet. It's just like a pasture. It's pretty dry.
There we go. More valid data, Michael.
Yep. Any other areas that you think are worth highlighting, Dan?
I think I think we should transition the the conversation to Weston I know here pretty quick. But I I don't want to get away get to that until the rest of commissioners have a chance to kind of look at the urban core of the city.
I don't know if everyone noticed, but Allison sent us a chat. And so we have a link to access to this map. If you guys want to check it out on on your computer, it's a little hard to see in the meeting format.
Thanks, Allison.
Alex, did you? Did you come back in? Are you here and yet?
Yeah, I yeah, I just had to log out, log back in. I'm back.
You're good. May maybe absent any other feedback on the the downtown portion, we could just pan to the west a bit and look at the west to nine oh. When I when we chatted, you know, TRPC was gracious enough to give up some of their time to go through this to make sure. I have an understanding of what their report and outcomes are going to be and and that they they're hearing from us, you know, then and as well as now. If you pull back a little bit, you know, we've talked about this commission about the the west to nine oh designation being pretty, pretty strongly encumbered by prairie species. The Mazama Paca Gopher in particular, and then those areas that that have that 117 label. It's really, if you look at the aerials, right up on top of, you know, the hill. And had a couple conversations with developers about potential for putting houses up there. And so far, they haven't been able to make anything pencil. You know, developers who know how to make some pens and haven't been able to haven't felt comfortable moving forward, so. I think I thi- I think realizing 117 units out of Weston I know is is very, very realistic. And and probably begs a conversation between you about how we how we adjust the growth projections for the city and the forecast for where that growth might end up. Because you you can see that the rest that much of the rest of the city would have a hard time infilling to that extent. I I don't remember your math, Michael, but.
It was about 20% of capacities in Weston I know.
Yeah.
With the assumptions that we have in the model right now.
So any any questions about Weston I know or any any other feedback for TRPC related to buildable lands?
Well, just just seems more and more like Weston I know is maybe not buildable. So.
Maybe not going to happen in the next 20 years, anyway.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm just gonna say I'm just saying there is incredible pressure for residential development, pushing all the way down from King County through through Pierce County, through northern Thurston, down into southern Thurston. We have, you know, pretty regular interests right now inquiries, right? From developers and I don't know, I get the feeling that at some point someone's going to figure out how to develop Lemon Hill and make it affordable to do so, so.
I I. Something we're seeing that across Thurston County, across the urban areas, that properties that people thought never would develop 20 years ago. Now that the housing market is hot as it is, those lots are starting to fill up.
Maybe it's okay because we do want infill first, right? If possible, it's not as appetizing for a developer who's looking to, you know, make a lot of money. But people are taking advantage of the smaller opportunities, which is, I think, good for the community. I like the infill.
Yeah, it's wonderful to see that house behind your house, Will. God.
Yeah, that thing looks amazing.
Beautiful, beautiful thing. Yes.
Hey, Michael, I I don't mean to get into weeds on you, but I noticed that parcel we were just looking at on on Old Highway 99 that I thought was encumbered by either floodplains or wetlands. It's actually zone C three. So I'm not sure how much, you know, we we can do some attached single family units off of that, but we won't get much density beyond that. Yeah, so that parcel, that's got a C three zone.
Do you know, does that parcel boundary, is that split into two different zoning designations? That may be what's going on there.
Yeah, it does. It's got like the southern half there that's all gray is C three and the northern half is single family environmentally sensitive.
Okay, yeah, that's what's happening there. We we don't split parcels between zoning districts. It just it gets the zoning of wherever the majority of the parcel falls. So that's going to be one of those errors. So that would be the.
It looks like. Yeah, it looks like two parcels on the zoning map, so maybe double check that when you when you guys get back in. Because it's it looks like two parcels now, but that's that I'm showing that parcel as being like 35 acres in the C three zone, not in not in residential. So if it was in, I don't know how many units, you have that data when we click on this stuff? Does it show how many that you're assuming?
No, I don't have that.
All right.
So I'll have to look that up tomorrow. So that's a parcel off of Garfield in Old Highway 99. That sort of our hope is that we know that not everything's going to be right, but we hope that we're a little high on some parcels and a low on other parcels. And that when you look at it across the zone or across the city, is that is that right?
How does the where the oh, that's my that's my cursor, never mind. Just southeast of the the parcel we were just talking about, the C three parcel. There's like a mobile home park there. How does that fit into your density equation? It's pretty big. And I would say potential for redevelopment is there for residential. But, you know, how will that affect us if at all, I guess?
Yeah, that's actually a really good question. When we look at redevelopment, we only assume that redevelopment happens in zones that allow both a mix of commercial and residential development. So for areas that are zoned, certainly residential, we don't assume that it will redevelop. We don't see a lot of that in Thurston County. It's pretty rare for honestly, for single family homes to be torn down and and redeveloped into something with a higher density. Usually if they are taken down, if you take a single family home down and you put a single family home up, it doesn't really affect capacity. There are a few examples of manufactured home parks. And I think I believe there's one in Lacey right now that is being bought out and then redeveloped. So again, with the housing market really changing, there is more potential for that. So that's something that we're definitely going to have to kind of monitor to see how frequent that is. And if we need to update our assumptions to take them into account.
Good.
I think this one in Tenino, it's pretty built out. I don't think there's capacity for more manufactured homes there, so we're not showing any additional capacity. We just.
I got a call on that on that property last year and it 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 sold and changed hands to a new owner. So I I don't I didn't. I got the impression that, you know, they were in it for the long haul for for as a our mobile home park.
Okay.
Because it's split zone too. That one's got multifamily on one side and a single family zoning on the back half.
Right.
To the to the east of Garfield Court.
Yeah, multifamily is what I was thinking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, one thing we've talked a lot about as a commission is promoting the infill development. I'm just kind of wondering, it's it's nice to see this data here so we can kind of see the physical layout of where that might happen. But I'm wondering what would what would kind of constitute a successful, I guess, result if we were able to grease the skids for the infill development? How would we know that we're making an impact? Is there like kind of normal rates that people would develop infill infill by? That we could try to exceed?
Oh, I I think that's really a question for you guys, really, to determine what's a successful rate or not. We just try to show where we think it's going to happen and and how much growth is going to occur, how much growth is going to occur and where it's going to happen. You know what your community's vision is, is, I guess, for you all to decide. I don't mean to punt that back at you, but.
That's fair. I I guess I wasn't necessarily directing the question at any one person in particular.
I think where TRPC can add value is that we can help you track, you know, how much infill development is actually taking place and where it's occurring to help you kind of set metrics for success.
How how do you get gather this information?
So I believe Ronna is on the line every year. She graciously gives me all of Tenino's building permits. Information on subdivisions and flats, we get from the county assessor because I'm sorry, the county auditor, they're all filed with the county auditor. So every year, every other year, we usually gather all that data and keep track of where there's subdivisions and how many new lots are created. And then when we do a forecast update, we also talk to the city planner. So in the past, it's been Fred. I think this year it was John Millard or Dan. I can't recall. Big information about those projects that maybe haven't been approved yet, but they're in that development pipeline. So big thanks to your city staff because they're really they're critical in making that happen.
Thank you, Ronna.
This is this is Allison and I work with Michael at TRPC on buildable lands. And it was really great to check in with Dan and and hear from you guys and what you're thinking about. I think a question that that we had is I I think I turn that question back around to you guys is it's been interesting to hear and also see the amount of infill development that is happening in Tenino. And I'm curious what you guys are maybe thinking about as far as how to encourage, how you are encouraging that, what's making that successful? Because this is something that is of interest across our region. That's Michael touched really at a high level on the sustainable Thurston goals. And, you know, all our communities are looking at, we just don't have a lot of open land. Are we every year? We have a little bit less than we used to. So what what you feel like is working for you as far as creating the kind of community that you want? And also, is there anything that you guys are thinking about? That that might be of interest to other other communities?
You want us to give up our secrets?
Well, one, this this is Alex and one thing I know that we had talked about before and I've been looking into it is borrowing from Lacey, what they're doing with their ADUs. As far as having, you know, making the process much easier, having, you know, a certain number of plans that are already, you know, ready to go, already approved. I think I think everyone really likes to talk about, you know, affordable housing. And I think anything we can do to create a well blended community that, you know, that that younger, you know, adults, families, all the way to, you know, senior citizens can find a place in. So I think there's, yeah, that's something that's really been interesting to me is the idea of ADUs. And how can we maximize the space that we already have while offering housing options that are affordable?
Yeah, that's an excellent point. Michael, how did you guys handle the potential for ADUs or live work? Because I know you rolled it into for the live work spaces where you've got a residential incorporated in a commercial structure. There is a small allowance for growth in there, I recall from some of the tables, but what about ADUs?
Yeah, live work would probably come into play with our redevelopment assumptions. We don't really have anything explicit about that. For ADUs, we really look at just at a countywide level, what the trends have been and kind of project each year, how many ADUs we think could be constructed. We don't really do a capacity analysis for ADUs like we do for regular single family homes or manufactured multifamily homes. So what we tend to do is try to identify the the parcels that would be most likely are the best candidates for those ADUs and just kind of sprinkle them around. Spread them out like peanut butter, if you will. So it's really just kind of thinking, okay, well, how many might be built in the next five to 10 years based on past trends? And then which parcels are most likely to see them? The number is pretty small at a countywide level. I can't remember exactly, but it's not a huge number.
Apparently they have ADUs now. You can fold up and, you know, put on a on a flatbed. The Olympian had an article today about about that. Did you? Did you see that?
Really? No. Interesting. Like a prefabricated kind of deal. Interesting.
I love having access to this map. I'm going to have fun with it. I've already scoped out. I've already scoped out all the blocks anywhere near my house. Like, oh, I know that property. I know that property.
No, no, I'm excited to hear that you're using it. And like I said, please let me know if you have any feedback or something looks wrong. That's valuable information for us.
Based on seeing all this, is there any other questions you might want to add to the survey now? And Michael and Allison, any, I know you saw, we talked about the survey, any other comment you might have for it?
No, it really emphasizes to me those questions about growth and what kind of growth you want to see in the community. Because I think buildable lands, our work just shows that it's going to happen. We do expect it to happen across the county and in Tenino. So kind of honing in on the type of growth that you want to see is is important.
Yeah, I think that's a really good thing to highlight. The buildable lands report and the buildable lands program, what we show in the model is based on how things are going and the rules we have on the ground, what things could look like in the future. It's really up to you guys then in your comprehensive plan as part of that discussion to say, is that the future we want? And if it isn't, what might we want to do differently to change that? So and then our, if you make those changes, our forecasts then change to reflect those changes. So it's, I think it's really important to look, it's really easy to look at these maps and be like, this is this is the future of what will happen. It's just a possibility. And and you shouldn't take it necessarily as being this is what will happen. But it's a it's a foundation and an information source for you guys, particularly on planning commissions, to think about what those patterns will look like and if that's what what you think is is really reflecting the vision that the community wants.
I see using some of the languages in this that about the prediction, putting that part of the survey so people get a picture of it.
Well, thanks, everyone for tonight. I think I'm going to drop off here. Thanks for serving our our city on the commission. Thanks, TRPC, for doing the work you're doing. And we look forward to continuing our work with the comprehensive plan, economic development chapter. And you will hear more from us. We'd love to hear more from you, so.
Thank you, Aslan. Appreciate it. Okay, commissioners, do we have any more questions for TRPC?
If not, I'm going to stop sharing my screen here. I can figure out how to do that.
Okay. Well, thank you, Michael and Allison. We really appreciate you coming and giving us this presentation and access to the map. I think that's going to be invaluable in the future, so really appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Nice. Okay. On that note, we have no public hearing. We have no unfinished business. I think all that's left is Alex is I am, it doesn't say your name, but I know that this is something that you have been thinking about. Do you want to give us a presentation on your idea?
Totally, totally. Hey, Jen, are you able to bring up the images? So, okay, there we go. We got them. Awesome. Okay, so this is something that we had talked about before. I know that there had been some some interest in in what we're looking at here is the area within city limits. That's along Scatter Creek, mainly between Scatter Creek and the Trussell. So this first this first map that I have here. So as we were talking about it, you know, I was kind of really looking at the different areas of Tenino that we have to offer. And I think one thing that's important to look at is, you know, each area of Tenino that we can create, that's kind of a landing spot or like a magnet that draws people in. So you'll see in red on the right hand corner, right lower corner. I mean, that's our entire Tenino City Park, the athletic fields, the quarry pool. You know, the Depot Museum, just above that, we've got our entire historic district, the strip right off of Sussex. In black above that is our sports complex. You know, the football field, the high school football field, baseball fields. We've seen people come into town for clinics and camps that are offered over there. And then something exciting that we've been working on, we've got the agricultural park. And then obviously, just a little west of that, we have the Alpaca Farm in that area that we will hopefully be seeing development over the years as well. So one thing that I was thinking about is just that area, again, that's next to Scatter Creek, in between Scatter Creek and the Trussell. I know that some people have brought up interest in possibly turning that into some sort of a commercial zone that could benefit and utilize the beauty of the nature and the creek. You know, I mean, you, I I could definitely see a distillery in there. Maybe a coffee roaster or a wine maker. There's lots of different things that you could do in that area, restaurants, so on and so forth. The other thing is it would be a great stopping point in between what we currently have downtown Tenino as well as the new agricultural district, our egg park and west Tenino. Especially when we have like the bike path going through that we've been talking about extending. So that's the first one. If we could just go to the next slide. Jen, awesome. Okay, so that's kind of the area that we're talking about. So basically, I know that we had been wanting to, we had talked about looking into this. So I guess what I'm looking to do is see if the planning commission is interesting, interested in bringing up this idea to the the city council and see if that's something that they would be interested in us further looking into.
Yeah, it sounds interesting to me. You know, I think this just came to mind. I don't know what's possible. But, you know, one of the main deterrents, I think, from looking at as it from a development standpoint at that is obviously the the creek and wetland, you know, potential setbacks in that area. I wonder if the city could sort of preemptively do some of the wetland delineation stuff as a means of encouraging that. If we wanted to go this route, maybe we could make it a little more appetizing by doing some of that legwork that would be like the thing that would deter people from even thinking about it, probably, right?
Right. Well, and I think too, there's going to be a lot of questions that we've got to answer, you know, as we as we look into this. Obviously, wetlands is a is a big one. And so, yeah, those are all great. Great points. So I guess what I'm looking for, so I'm wondering, how do we move forward from here? Do we need, do we need to see, first of all, if we want to come up with a motion to take this idea and present it to the city council to see if that's even something they want us to further look into? Or what would be the process?
It's a good question.
I mean, I think I think we should the council shouldn't be like vehemently against something like that. So, you know, it's probably worth a a conversation with them to make sure you don't spend a bunch of time pursuing an idea that doesn't have any support from council, but you you. Yeah, you could still develop a, you know, a concept conceptual plan for how to do. It's a it's like a little sub area plan. It would require a comp plan amendment at at the most complex extent and perhaps just an overlay at another. So it could it could be as little as a zoning map amendment and a zoning code amendment, depending on, you know, what results from it. The S and P is underway as well. The Shoreline Master, you know, program is underway. We got our last set of comments from ecology. There was a little bit of language, as you recall, for commercial development next to the shoreline. The only shoreline in the city is Scatter Creek, so, you know, this would be in that in that section. So we'd want to make sure there's consistency between what we're about to, you know, potentially adopt in the SMP and what you are proposing with the with the, you know, creekside, be like a creekside commercial district or creekside. and what you are proposing with the, with the, you know, creekside, be like a creekside commercial district or creekside enhancement, you know, retail commercial enhancement district.
Yeah.
The, the, so I mean, I think I'm intrigued and there, I'm wondering whether there could be a, a street connection. You know, I think that's probably the hardest thing right now is the only way to get there is to, is to drive up.
Old, old Highway 99.
Well, you have to drive up McClellan and then kick over on Morningside to get there, right?
To access the top part, but yeah, would you be, would you be able to punch a road there?
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying.
Because you'll have your most, you know, I would think, you know, just eyeballing it, you'd have your most success if you could punch a road up near the creek, like Huston Street extends over. And then there's also, uh, that other one. You're right where the old Highway 99 label is at really. Not seeing the label of it. But that, that's the one that goes up to the quarry up there, right?
Right.
If you, if you take that and you expand it and punch that all the way through to Morningside, now you've got kind of a grid network and people don't have to go all the way around to get to something coming off of Morningside.
Sure.
The creek kicks over there too.
It does.
It does. At some point. I wish the creek was actually on this map, actually. That would be helpful.
Yeah, I, I was trying to overlay it. Again, the, the area that I indicated is just a very rough.
Sure.
Idea.
How many trains are you, are you guys getting a day?
Corey would know better than anyone. There's probably, uh, you know, how many trains do you think, Corey? A dozen? Twenty, maybe?
Yeah, I would say a dozen to twenty, yeah.
Yeah.
What's the condition? Yeah, what's the condition of that Morningside Drive-Trussell, the under, the underpassing?
It's rough.
Yeah, I drove up, I drove up there not too long ago. It's, it's, it's narrow.
Yeah. It's kind of like, kind of like the one on 99 up by the powder, the whistle stop.
You know what you could do? You guys remember, you remember when we were doing the Tenino due Bogota Trail feasibility and there was a bunch of route finding through there?
Yes, yeah.
And the crunch was always coming down to 99 and trying to figure out how to get through the trussel. I wonder if you could just push it across on, you know, Sussex, uh, which turns into Morningside and bring it down. If you were to bring it down along the creek there and just do a.
Yeah, you could make that a part of the commercial district.
You'd also need to make sure you have a willing, you know, a land, a landowner who was at least willing to be a part of the conversation. I know that there's a couple of big parcels out there. So those are all just things you'd want to be aware of.
Sure.
Would it make sense to just make the road go down along the railroad tracks on that side instead of on the creekside? And then try and develop as close as, as feasible to the creek from that road? That you know, you know that road's gonna be dry. I mean, right, I think, up to a certain point. Uh, and the city, I think, owns that property that's down in the lower right-hand corner of the hatched orange area that you have there.
The, okay.
Like along the tracks there?
Well, the city has right away, right up against the Burlington Northern Railroad, basically right underneath that bright red pen mark.
Right.
You can see the right of way on there, right?
Is that the green, the green that's, um, or is that the rail railroad line?
Hey Jen, can you zoom in a little bit on that, that district map? I know all of us can if you, if you, if you want to use that plus bar on your screen.
It cuts off the bottom though, when you need it.
Go right at it. Purple. Yeah, so you can see the right of way there, right? There's like a block pattern there and that's existing city right of way. And there is, um, there is a little bit of city right of way, you know, about a third or so down there, but then it turns into private property. So you have to, those two, there's, there's two big parcels right there in the middle are. And the creek, the creek's hug in the eastern edge, right?
Yeah, and then I think up towards the top, I think it starts to cut towards west.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
You're right. It, it kind of hugs the, well.
It's hard to talk about it without the creek.
It is.
The creek goes right up to where the trussel crosses, you know, the trussel and the Morningside Drive intersect.
Okay.
So in the, in the northeast corner of your little district map there, that's about where the creek, I'm showing the creek and that floodplain is at. That whole section's floodplain. So there's just, there's just accommodations that would need to be made there.
I pulled up a map as well to kind of look at where the creek is running in those two larger parcels that you're talking about, kind of in the middle there. It looks like the creek runs right along the, that middle lines, like right through the middle of this area that Alex has identified.
Right.
I'm showing that as the Summers property, the big, the big one's a Summers property.
Uh, Dan, do you know if there's still interest? I know that somebody had expressed some interest in developing a distillery down there and maybe using some of that city land. Is that, how far, is that just a, you know, kind of ethereal at this point? Or is, or what do you think?
I think it's, I think it's more than that. I think it's a, it's a desire. So I think this could be a part of that. You know, most of this property is zoned, single-family, environmentally sensitive. The parcels that are, there's a series of kind of silly little parcels with a funny little arc down there. Yeah, the ones that are orange are in that kind of southwest corner of this diagram, those are single-family. But it's odd in the sense that the city owns parcels that have a single-family zone. And I don't, I don't, I don't know how much density we would actually see from that. It'd be kind of fun to see if Michael's map was still up, but that, some of that stuff is, uh, you know, right up against the railroad. I, I don't know that, you know, that, that doesn't happen very often anymore, usually in more dense places where there's nothing else left. Building, building a bunch of, up against an active railroad track. Especially one that's kind of elevated through there, if I don't, if I'm correct, just, you know, so you're, that train will kind of tower over your house.
Yeah, it does.
So I'm not sure that that's the, the highest and best use of that property. The environmentally sensitive designation maybe, but not the single family that's up against old Highway 99, right? Where, you know, your cursor's at. That doesn't seem to me to be a, a real prime place to have, so, you know, an eight-lot subdivision.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it'd be a first choice, that's for sure.
So how do you want, how do you want me to, you know, proceed on this? Do you want me to, or will, do you want to have a conversation with the mayor? Alex, I know you've talked to the mayor already. Is he feeling like that's, this is something that council would be interested in evaluating?
So what I can do, um, so I, I hadn't entirely talked to Wayne about this particular idea yet. I just know that we had talked about it and we had heard that there'd been some, you know, businesses interested in the possibility. Do you want me, what I could do, I could, I could shoot him over these images and just kind of give him the, you know, 20,000-foot view and just see what he thinks. Would, would that be a good next step?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, if you, I mean, there's a, there's a budget implication. If you guys want me to work on it, you know, the, it'd be nice to have the mayor clear me to do so. I'd be happy to do that. I think, I think you may have something here, depending on, you know, the floodplain implications about, about where we would need to be. And then the, there's private property, you know, obviously private property interests as well. We want to be sensitive to those.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have a map that has the, the creek on it as well. And maybe, you know, the county has some wetland layers that aren't really super accurate, but just for conceptual visualization sake, it would be helpful. And then seeing the, the trussel on Morningside and where the creek, you know, crosses Morningside. All that would be helpful in conceptualizing like what's possible, you know? I think it's definitely interesting, you know?
At the risk of, um, you know, spending a few more minutes, I've got that all up. If you, if I, if you guys want to see it and I can share my screen real quick just for.
Sure.
Oh.
Yeah.
A high-level view of it, because it, it is, there is stuff all, all over the place. So I pulled up the, the wetland map, the stream map. And I thought I remember this was in the FEMA.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
So that's.
Jen, would you be able to share Dan's screen? Can we do that?
Hey, there we go.
Nice.
I don't know how I approve it. It's just a lag. All right. All right, so there it is. The blue is the, um, is the, is the wetland buffer. So that's, that's why you're getting that on the creeks in here, if you can see my mouse. Are you, see my mouse? And then this, this purple hatch, I believe that's the 100-year floodplain. Okay. I think that's right.
So it looks like it goes right up to the railroad tracks, basically? Almost. That's the city, that little city access.
This, this piece right here is BNSF property.
Right. And the city has a long, narrow parcel right next to it, right? Or per, part of that? Yeah, there we go.
That's BNSF too.
Oh, it is. Okay, okay.
But this, the one right next to it, that pipe stem property, that's the Summers property. And here's where you start getting into, this is the one that's the city. No, that's still Summers. The city's up here somewhere. There's, there's one of the cities. So you got this funny little arc that comes through that used to be, I think, an old road and they squared it off for Green Street. So that's, Alex, that's kind of the challenge is trying to figure out where to, you know, where to connect that and, and how to recognize where Scatter Creek is and where it floods. Is it wet right now or was it, has it been wet in the last couple of weeks?
In that area? I have no idea.
Corey, do you know?
Yeah, I haven't looked at that exact area, but just looking at other portions of Scatter Creek, just upstream and downstream from there, I'm, I'd be surprised if it's not wet.
Yeah.
I think there's some potential there. I just don't know. I think on the north end here in this, in the floodplain, this, and the buffer for the creek, you'd be hard-pressed, but if you could bring your trail down and then tap into green, now you've got something, you know, even if you're running along this edge. But that's what, that's what you're looking at. That's your, that's your overlay.
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah, no, that's good.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe, so what I'll do, I'll, I'll shoot Wayne a message with the images and just kind of a brief concept, conceptual idea of what we're thinking about and see if, if that is something that they would like us to further explore. Is that what you're thinking would be a good, good way forward, Dan?
I think so. And may, and maybe, you know, based on what we just saw and the floodplain and the creek buffer is, you know, maybe a through streets. And I say a bridge too far, but we, we might be able to just come up from Green Street and, and redesignate that southern, you know, like the southern third there.
Sure. And if, and if we, if we could somehow figure out how to bring the, the bikes and pedestrian trail through as well, that might, that might also be, well, I, I don't know. Okay, yeah. But anyways, yeah, that's, okay. I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to the mayor and, and just see if that's, uh, something they want us to look into.
Okay. Nice. Thanks for bringing that up. It is an interesting concept.
We'll just have to see if it's feasible.
Right. I mean, something, something. We can definitely use it, you know, at least parts of it for a better use than we're using it for right now. You know, it may be challenging to figure out how it's all going to come together, but, um, you know, once you find out the parts that are usable, that you can kind of come up with some kind of conceptual design or something that would get people excited about it, maybe, or, you know, see if council's interested, but yeah.
Yeah, or, or, yeah, see if, see if we do have that community buy-in, if there are any, you know, yeah, so, great.
Okay, nice.
Or maybe, maybe I just missed it, but maybe that's a question that could come up on the survey, maybe not quite so specific to this, but you know, as part of economic development, would you support expansion of, or, or changes to the, the land use types to accommodate additional commercial opportunities or something like that?
Yeah.
Be more specific if there's council support for something like this. Maybe you, you start, you roll that in.
Today.
Economic development piece that George and Michael and Aslan are working on.
Absolutely.
That's a good idea. Yeah. Okay, well, um, on that note, I would say we should all make an effort to look through the survey questions and get any additions or comments to George by next Wednesday, if at all possible, so they can incorporate our ideas into that plan. Next meeting, there's a potential that we'll do some of the SWOT exercise, if you guys are still interested in doing that. So try to look over the, the information that I sent from the EDC regarding that. And, uh, Jen, if we could get the, uh, the minutes for the December meeting for our next meeting, that would be good. Other than that, if there are no, does anyone have any announcements, anything interesting going on they want to mention? If not, then I'm gonna say, meeting adjourned.
So actually, just one more thing. Hey, Dan, are you still there?
Yeah, he's still there.
Remember, so that, that image that we saw that showed the wetland area and the stream, is there any chance you'd be able to email me that image?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, cool. And then I'll just kind of mark on it. Okay, perfect. That's all I had. Sorry, just thought of that.
All that information's on Thurston County GeoData as well, Alex. So if you go to that website, you can add in those wetland layers and the wetland buffer layers and the FEMA layers to the map. And it's actually a pretty good website if you've not been there.
Okay, okay. I, I could try that as well.
Yeah.
I'll send you the link. How about that, Alex? We'll start there and can't get to it, just let me know and I'll download a PDF.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. Okay, meeting adjourned.
Good night, everyone.